Counselor Vicente checking in.
Thank you, Counselor Vicente. You're coming through loud and clear.
The second session of our special council meeting regarding the 2024 budget was started on December 5th. As reminded, this meeting was called for the following specific purpose. Under council's meeting rules, no other new business can be considered at this special meeting. All members, we have in chambers, we've got Counselor Tor, Deputy Mayor Singh, Counselor Santos online. We have Counselor Fortini, Vicente, and Braar. Okay, so we're gonna start. We are at item 5.1. That's our first item of business is public delegations. As this is a public meeting regarding adoption of 2024 budget, is there anyone here tonight who wishes to come forward to address counsel on this matter? You have up to five minutes. I'll ask the clerk if he has any requests to delegate as well.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We do not have any requests online, but we do understand that Sylvia is here to delegate.
Hello, my name is Sylvia Roberts. I'm a resident of Board Three. I want to speak specifically mostly about the transit budget. I am very happy to see the amount of service hours in this budget. It's far more than what was in the five-year budget, and it properly recognizes just the sheer amount of need for service hours. I do understand why it was done to... Is anyone listening, or are they all chatting with each other? So I do understand why it's very fair-heavy on paying for it. In fact, more than 100% of the increase in service hours comes from fares, and the city is putting in less money, proposing less money than previously. This is, I understand why it showed a modest decrease. I know it makes council happy to see the budget is technically shrunk on the property taxpayer side. The thing to keep in mind when residents see that, residents who take the bus, what it's showing is that we're like, yeah, screw you. That's how it feels to the residents, because you're asking riders to pay for over 100% of the increase, that we're actually gonna cut the amount. And it does not feel fair or just. So I understand why you're doing it. It's just very frustrating. We also have the issue of the amount of routes that are increasing very quickly. The Dixie bus, for example, has, the ridership has doubled in like a year, which is frankly crazy. And so the problem is, a lot of our plans have not kept up. So for example, we're expecting that the Transportation Master Plan wants the Dixie Zoom. That's gonna show it, but the Transportation Master Plan is from 2015 and is based on 2011 forecasts, which is based on the 2006 census. So in some ways, we are attempting to make predictions based upon ancient data that is just so far out of date. And so we need to have more flexibility for staff to bring things forward. For example, being able to see that 18,000 riders per day on Dixie, it literally saves the city money to put in a Zoom line. So it is costing you money to not put in a Zoom line, because it is so much cheaper when it's at that level of crowding to put in articulated buses, because yes, it costs, I think, 20 to 25% more per service hour, but they can carry 50% more. And when you're at that level of crowding, you'd get more riders simply by being able to fit them on. So your fare box recovery would go up, and effectively, it's free in terms of service hours. In fact, you'd probably run a profit on adding a bunch of articulated buses to that route. So it's, there needs to be more flexibility for staff in order to be able to implement changes, even though some of our plans are very out of date. And as I've mentioned, how far we're, how, like in the Brampton plan, it's showing, oh, we're gonna plan for a million people by 2051. Well, the issue is, that target is gonna get fed into the new Transportation Master Plan. And so because it's completely underestimating the numbers, it's gonna project, say, oh, we're gonna need this in the 2040s. But the reality is, we're gonna need it for a population we're gonna hit in 2031. This creates serious issues for staff if council is expecting them to strictly hold to this, because the demand for the services may be there in 2030, but your documents don't plan for it until 2045, because we are so far behind on the planning. And this kind of, this isn't an issue from staff. A lot of this has to do with, this is just how provincial legislation expects planning staff to do it. But it's, council needs to understand that different departments need flexibility implementing it because of just how far off the provincial regulations say we should do stuff versus how reality is actually in Brampton. Does anyone seriously believe it's gonna take us 30 years to add 250,000 people? Even statistics can attest that we had 25,000 people a year. So that's 10 years, and does anyone think it's only 25,000 people? So make sure you're planning for that in the future. And in the next budgets coming up, we can't just have the service hour increases entirely paid for by ridership. I know it was tempting to do this to get the huge amount of hours we needed, but it's simply not sustainable to put it all on the taxpayers. Because what's happening is, you're just getting reports saying, oh, we're not getting enough from user fees, and you're like, we're gonna make it fares or user fees free for certain classes of people for recreation. So that's going down, and it's effectively being subsidized in the system by jacking up fares on riders who are disproportionately poor to give tax cuts to people who are disproportionately. So please be mindful of that when crafting your budgets. Thank you.
Delegations. Seen on, we'll move on and deal with items in agenda order. Oh, motion to receive. The delegation moved by Counselor Keenan, seconded by Counselor Tor. All those in favor, motion carries. Okay, so this takes us to, the next item will be, we've already dealt with 6.1 and 6.2. So did we wanna move to, Peter, 7.1, or? Yeah, okay. So there's a staff report, the Brampton Transit approval to increase the transit operator complement by 50 full-time equivalents. This is one of the things that helps us have more operators available. Has every member of council been briefed on this? So maybe we do the benefit of Heidi, if you could explain this to counsel, this request from Brampton Transit.
Sure, through the mayor.
Just with respect to what you're mentioning, is this not included in the budget as presented to the committee already?
It is included in the budget, but there was a rationale why this motion, I think it was a request from Brampton Transit to have this motion separated.
I don't understand why we would separate something that was all included in the budget.
Through the mayor, so there's no impact on the budget for these 50 positions. So although they're part of their new complement, we would be saving money by hiring these 50 people. That's why. Do you want, do you want, do you want me to explain?
Please.
Okay, so during COVID, obviously absenteeism increased. After COVID, we found that our long-term absences increased. So people that were off, employees that were off for over six months, continuing on where they were actually out of sick credits, they weren't being paid, they're off now without pay. However, given the amount of people off, absent, we have to cover these positions. We need, we need them on, we need people to drive buses beyond the road. So these, these employees are covered on a regular basis. What we found is the volume of long-term absences meant that we had, the only way we could cover them is through overtime. We planned to have a certain amount of resources to cover absences, but the amount of them was too much. So we were covering it overtime, which is very costly. So we did an analysis, and the analysis showed that we would be able to, if we hired 50 full-time employees, we could actually break even. There would be no cost. We could cover in operational costs.
Are there any questions? I know that absentee issue was something that was, something that Brampton Transit struggled with. And are there any questions for Heidi on, on this? Sure, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we, we've been paying so much overtime that to increase the staff, I, I understand it. Is there anywhere else in the city that we're doing the same thing? And how much overtime are we paying in other areas that we may be able to essentially do what Transit is doing? Have other departments looked, looked at this? In particular, public works and community services and planning.
So if I can, through the chair, in terms of the impacts from all the human resources we have in the city, Transit was one of the most hardest hit in terms of coming out of COVID. The primary around the operators who are the front line that are scheduled services. When we look at other departments like PW, Parks, and Rec, a lot of those services, if a person's absent for a period of time, it's not a critical component where you're missing, it will severely impact your operation, where if you remove a bus off the road, if you don't have a driver driving it, then that service is lost. In other areas, it's augmented by other staff around, but we found that Transit had the highest rate of absenteeism, the highest rate of WSIB claims that went up well over 100%. And that's the areas that targeted, and this is why this report came, came about. Some of them are probably experiencing some of it, but nowhere near the degree that Transit is.
Like what, how, how much of a, of an increase compared to, what was the difference between Transit and, and other?
I don't have the exact numbers through the chair. I know that absenteeism has increased through all departments, but the heaviest hit are Transit. And again, like I said, most of the ones in other departments were able to still operate without a huge compromise in terms of service that they provide.
Okay, Counselor Plushy, so we have the motion on, on the floor. Moved by Counselor, Deputy Mayor Singh, seconded by Counselor Tor. All those in favor, motion carries. Okay, this takes us to our next item. Peter, which is in my agenda, I've got correspondence.
That's correct.
So we've got correspondence from Anthony Mello, Brampton resident, dated November 22nd. Correspondence from Anthony Mello dated December 3rd on litter and cleanliness. And we have correspondence from Todd Letts, Chief Executive Officer, Brampton Board of Trade, dated December 7th. So can I have a motion to receive the correspondence? Moved by Counselor Santos, seconded by Counselor Power. On the board, okay, Counselor Santos.
Thank you through you, it's okay. Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to receive the correspondence, but I think under the correspondence 8.1 regarding bylaw enforcement and the complaints that Anthony Mello had brought forward, which is essentially consistent with many of the complaints we received at various town halls. And I did speak about it in previous discussions at, at the, at budget deliberations earlier this week. And so I've been talking to staff about perhaps looking at an operational review. And Peter Faye has a motion. Is it possible for me, Peter, to bring that motion forward since the topic of correspondence is about bylaw enforcement?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If you're free to introduce the motion anytime during this special council meeting, so we can bring that up on the screen if you wish to introduce it.
Okay. I think it's just for, it's, you passed it, yep. So this is to, to deal with some of the complaints and just make sure that, based on the issues that we've been experiencing over the past few years related to inconsistencies of bylaw enforcement or optimizing the use of resources for proactive bylaw enforcement, we're just looking to perhaps look at an operational review of the department to improve the department. So a question, I guess, to staff, because we've been having a conversation about this. Has some of this work already started, given some of the direction that we have provided more recently in the past?
Through the chair, thank you very much, Counselor, for your, your question. In fact, the Legislative Services Department was already looking at many of these aspects that you've mentioned and that have been identified in, in your motion. Some of the things we were already looking at were SOPs, response times, identifying hotspots. And so since the last meeting, in coordination with the CAO's office, we've decided to initiate a more fulsome review of bylaw and enforcement services, more or less along the same lines of what you've proposed here. And I, I will take the points that you've identified here and ensure that they are incorporated into the work that we're already planning to do. And we're already looking at an external consultant to help us. We have internal resources with subject matter expertise. And our plan would be to report back to council. We can, we can definitely report back to council in Q1 of 2024. So given that that's already in the works, if I may propose that there may not be a need for, for your motion?
Okay, great. So then if, if staff have already started the process, and we're certainly gonna have a new Legislative Services Commissioner in the new year upcoming, and if we're already gonna be getting something in Q1 2024, I'm happy to withdraw this motion because it's redundant essentially, and it's not necessary. But I do just wanna emphasize that our residents, this is one of the top complaints, is, is actual bylaw enforcement and kind of taking action on some of those complaints, particularly that come either through 311, the call center, or through counselor offices. And I would love to get to a point where I could follow the bouncing ball to see where a complaint is at the city of Brampton. So thank you. I'm happy to just withdraw this, since staff are already looking into it. Thank you.
Yeah, and you know, Counselor Santos, thank you for raising this, because you are right. One thing we got loud and clear from the community coffee chats was about the ability for bylaw to respond. There was a ton of complaints about the lack of responses. So I know it came up particularly acute in the wards 1 and 5 and 3 and 4 coffee chats, where we got more than an earful on this. And so, and Counselor Plushy's talked for a long time about sort of doing a, a look at how we do bylaw, how it's connected in the city. And so I think that would be very, it's a healthy process. And maybe this is a conversation, because I know Counselor Keenan and Counselor Santos, you both talked to me about this. Maybe before we ratify the budget on Wednesday, we can have a discussion about whether there should be a placeholder of funds for additional resource if that's needed. And maybe that's something you can have a side conversation with bylaw on, envisioning what may be needed once we complete this review, so at least it's in the budget, so we don't have to do a budget amendment. And so we'll have time between now and Wednesday. I think that would be a way to make the budget stronger. So I know, we have completed the, the presentation. So if counselors have motions or questions, I'm not gonna be as strict as, as chair in terms of the direction you wanna go. I'd encourage you to keep it to, to budget. But I know Counselor Keenan, for example, said he's got some further questions on Transit. And so now would be that appropriate time. We have officially received the course, three correspondences, or do you need that vote taken? Okay, so the correspondence, the three pieces of correspondence was, I said before, moved by Counselor Santos, seconded by Counselor Power. All those in favor, motion carries. And so now we're in the section of other business, which is when any questions, motions, or debate, or voting if necessary, can occur. Counselor Keenan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I've had lanky discussions with Transit, the staff at Transit. And it was always, it's for me, as you remember, Heidi, it's, it's about our green initiative. And just, because I don't have it in front of me, how many new diesel buses are we buying this year? Or in this budget, sorry?
So through the chair, for this year, in the budget, 23.
23 new diesel buses?
Yes, diesel buses.
Do we know how many we had in the last budget? Roughly, I don't need an exact number.
Through the chair, we have not budgeted for growth buses in a number of years due to COVID. So it's been a number of years since we've budgeted for diesel buses.
Okay. Would we anticipate buses being added, diesel buses? Just talking about diesel buses being added in our next budget. Yeah, they said there's been no new diesel buses in a number of years.
So the story on the diesel buses, I can explain. So the first priority is, given the number, like service demand, we need buses. We just, we need buses, we need service. So for short term, definitely, we, we, we want to green our fleet. No worries. We want to green our fleet. We've always been purchasing, well, for the last 13 years, purchasing hybrid electric vehicles. So that's a way of contributing to a green fleet. Currently, we cannot get a hybrid, a hybrid vehicle in a 60-foot bus, and that's the issue. They no longer make them. So any 40-foot bus right now will be hybrid electric. But if we have to buy, if we want to buy those buses, those are our people movers. Those double buses, we need to buy them in a diesel bus until we can electrify our fleet.
Absolutely. So my question is the longevity of the bus, and what is our actual target for going green? Not so much about the cost, but about hitting that green initiative. And it's come to my attention since the last time that we had spoke that there is the ability to lease buses that are slightly used. So I guess for me, it's like, what is the target? What is the target date for a green fleet? Because these buses, if I'm not mistaken, is 18, 19 years lifespan?
18 span.
So we'll have these, these new 23 buses in our fleet for 20 years.
There is, they're refurbished after 12 years, but there's, we are looking into options where we can convert them to either hydrogen or electric. And to, just to your question around plan, so that report from Cutrick, that's gonna be our battery, our battery electric bus strategic plan, or strategy and rollout plan that we're waiting for, is gonna be available in Q1 of 2024. So what that plan will do is it will outline what our future will look like for electrification. And that will, that will tell how many buses we're buying per year, what equipment, and things like that, and what types of buses as well.
Have we leased buses or purchased used buses for, to fill a gap in the short term?
So we've purchased 20 used buses currently that will be in service for 2024.
Oh, so those used buses, we've already, we've purchased used buses for that? Okay. Where were they budgeted from?
They would have been part of our, well, do you want to answer that?
Through the chair, Transit utilized funding that was available in past years' bus purchase projects in order to purchase those used buses.
Okay. So my biggest thing on this is, I'm, I'm struggling with buying new buses that we're gonna be stuck with for 19 years, knowing that we're trying to grow a green fleet. And understand that we'll have to trade some out, and you know, are we actually gonna? And what does it look like? Is, you know, diesel being part of that still for the longevity of those 20 years? For me, it's, it's tough to swallow. But I don't know, is there 60-foot buses still available for us to purchase that are used that might only have a 10-year span on them that could get us to our initiative quicker? Would be my question, but.
Through the chair, just to help out my Transit colleagues, given the history of this entire thing, typically, a lot of jurisdictions have lifecycle of 12 years. Brampton's one of the few that do an 18-year lifecycle. We do refurbishment after 10. The plan is, there's gonna be a mix of fully electrified vehicles. There'll be a mix of hydrogen vehicles as well through the full solution. But to get that full solution will take some time, probably through the time of lifecycle of, of, of a bus. In terms of the used buses that we purchased recently from, I believe, London, that was a kind of gap filled because of the difficulty of getting buses from the manufacturers, as well as exactly this, try to electrify our fleet, and let's minimize the new buses and try to get as much as we can from what's available on the market. We did go to council some time ago to have the authority, to have the flexibility to do that, just to make sure that we were transparent in terms of how we brought that forward. And that just allows us the ability to provide the service on the street with the vehicles that we need in the best way we, we feel is appropriate, looking at the full greening, electrification of our fleet, or with hydrogen as well.
Okay, so thank, thank you for that. So essentially, we, we too could sell our buses at that time as well. I'm okay, but thank you for answering my questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Plushy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just going back on these 20 and Counselor Keenan's original questions. So when Counselor Keenan asked how much, how many buses were budgeted in the previous years, or the previous few, I guess during COVID, we weren't buying any new buses. So there was $0 budgeted in 2020, 2021, 2022 for new buses?
Through the chair, in those years, there were some dollars budgeted for replacement buses.
There was, sorry?
There was dollars budgeted for replacement buses to replace our existing fleet.
Okay.
And there was also some dollars budgeted for some growth buses, 10 electric buses. But other than that, there was no, no other growth buses in the budget in those years.
Okay. So there was buses that were budgeted?
Not 60-foot diesel buses.
Through the chair, that's correct.
Okay. Did we purchase any 60-foot diesel buses within those years, even though we didn't budget for any?
Through the chair, no, we did not.
No, we didn't, okay. And your questions were just on the 60-foot diesels?
Yeah. Here we have some findings.
Okay.
It's hitting the targets.
Okay, now just going back to your comment when I had, sorry, jumped in there, and I apologize, Counselor Keenan. I guess I got a little. I guess I got a little carried away today because we were at the regional day fighting, fighting a little bit, so. When you don't spend your, the money on buses or whatever in a budgeted year, that money goes back, right? You don't get to keep it and then ask for more money. Is that correct? I'll look at Alex, Heidi, only because of the years and years that I've been on this side saying that, and...
So through the Chair, absolutely. When we budgeted a bus three or four years ago, or two years ago, those budgets remain with us to purchase those buses. And the reason being is, they're contingent on ISIP funding and the province and the federal government. So ours is generally, depending on which ones, is either twenty-three percent of the entire value or thirty-three point three percent of the entire value. We have to have that budgeted and there. But again, in terms of expending those monies, we report back to councils, we had with this whole thing with used buses, et cetera, in terms of when we utilize that, we bring forward when we implement the buses to council, to understand when they're actually going in service.
Right. And Alex, I knew you were going to say that, because I think you say that every year. I'm going to ask that, I know, because this budget is a little bit different, and I'll probably ask the mayor, because it's essentially the mayor's budget. When this comes to council, what we'd like to see is any monies that were unspent? We would like those highlighted in the budget when we're going through it, to see what they were budgeted for, and if we're going to, if we're still going to spend that money, great, because we already budgeted for them. But I just want to make sure that we're not putting in more, so that it goes back to my comments in previous budgets, the billion-dollar, the billion-dollar amount that sits within our budget that we can't spend, right? So I want to continue to ensure, and that's not just at Transit, Alex, it's across the department, if we can only spend this much, then that's how much we should be budgeting. Right?
No, and Counselor Plessy, I completely agree, it's inherently wrong to take funds from residents for a stated purpose if that is not achievable in the timeline that we've expressed we're taking it for. So I see Alex and Nash nodding, and I'm sure that information can be provided to council. Alex, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, if I can, through you, Mayor, very strong points, and this is something, I think it might be important, we're looking at our capital programs in other departments that are not so contingent on external funding from the federal provincial governments. I think when we have those fundings, we need to show that commitment there, and depending when it's expendable. What I would suggest, if it works for this process, is that Transit report back on the entirety of being fully transparent on exactly what's been budgeted, what's been approved, when they plan on going in, because all the asks are new ones, and that's a Transit component because of all the ISIP and public transit funds that have been approved, and we require those budget approvals. And then I know through this exercise, through the mayor's office, we've been really challenged in terms of what projects we're putting forward. Like you say, if we're not expanding, then why are we asking it? And that's something else I think we can report back on as well. I know our CEO has been very adamant in making sure that we're not asking for something where we haven't spent money and we're just, you know, piling on more money. So something that we can report back on as well, that might help maybe in terms of some of the questions.
Thought there might have been other speakers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Alex, for that. I think that would be helpful. Look forward to seeing that, Heidi. Did have some other questions with respect to some of the questions that we had answered, asked, and the answers that we received. Mr. Mayor, would you like me to go through some of those now?
Yes, please.
Just with respect to, and while we have Transit up, the mechanics, the eleven FTEs, and the savings of, where are the B with the savings? It was one point five for the mechanics. One point five for the mechanics, and I just wanted to, I don't know if you can, maybe, or maybe it's HR, but the one point five million for the eleven, so a hundred and forty-one thousand for each, is that, where are we with the wages? And is that, that's wage, that's wage benefits? And what else is that? Is that tools and space and, or anything like that?
Through the Chair, it's to do with wages and fringe benefits.
Hundred and forty-one thousand?
Through the Chair, that would include the base wage rate for the mechanic, and as Heidi mentioned also, what we call fringe benefit, which is pension, health, dental, all those things, WSIB premiums, uniforms, boots, tooling allowance, things like that, all roll into that figure.
Okay.
So we bring it all into the budget at once.
Okay. And then in terms of wages, are we competitive with other municipalities, metro leagues, TTC?
Through the Chair, just because of the collective agreements that we've negotiated in the past, in the Transit industry, we're very competitive. And we rank amongst the larger transit systems that we have. When you compare the mechanics to other departments, there are big variation, but in the Transit industry, we are competitive through that collective agreement process.
Okay. Probably more so because we have the best transit system in the world. I think that was it for Transit. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Are there other questions, Counselor Plessy?
No, on Transit.
You can go any topic now.
Free for all.
Yes.
Let's go with, thank you, Mr. Mayor, let's go with three-one-one, and the three hundred thousand to return to twenty-four-seven. And I was just trying to kind of get through this, and just seeing this for the first time, but that seems to be a higher number of volume, page ten, the month, call volumes, urgent requests, non-urgent, total number of submissions online. So twenty-three hundred, twenty-three hundred total calls in the month of July that were, yes, please help me here.
Through the Mayor, after hours, so between midnight and seven a.m.
Right, these are just after hours. Two thousand three hundred and seventy-three after hours. And what, and I'm sorry, Commissioner, what is considered after hours?
Through the Mayor, between midnight and seven a.m.
Twelve and seven. And who determines what an urgent request is?
Through the Mayor, there is a detailed list, so maybe an animal-related issue, a street light out, something more serious of that nature, something as a parking complaint would have fallen under the urgent list.
Okay. And then of those calls, do we know how many of them are actual parking concerns? I thought that I saw something. Yes. Animal services, one thousand three hundred and twenty-three. Those are after hours, but that's within the year, right? All after hours, age of fourteen?
Through the Mayor to Counselor Plessy, those are related to callback statistics, how many times people were called back by a representative of the operating department.
Oh, that's why it says right there, callback statistics.
Correct. And maybe Counselor Plessy, page twelve, on the third bullet point, might help.
Sorry?
Page twelve, on the third bullet point, the number of non-urgent service requests currently average about ten to fifteen per night. Non-urgent requests are primarily related to parking.
So ten to fifteen calls per night, primarily related to parking. Okay, I need to think about that for a second.
And Counselor Plessy, just on page ten, that would be probably referring to the November numbers, with the majority of submissions, fifteen thousand approximately submitted online or through the mobile app. So those would be calls only ten to fifteen, non-urgent calls.
Okay. I'm going to hopefully come back to that once another member asks questions. I can go to, I can go to BIA now. And I also need to come back to the variance between labor. So first of all, thanks, thank you to the BIA for providing the breakdown. I see things in here that you should not have in your budget, that we should have in our budget, like street cleaning. That forty-five thousand comes out, and Public Works, is it forty-five thousand? Downtown Street Cleaning, forty-five thousand? And Public Works now has to provide street cleaning. Safety. I need somebody in staff to be able to take over what the BIA was essentially going to do, to provide safety to the businesses in the downtown. Especially educational instructional sessions, what to do in non-emergency scenarios, security service for the downtown. We had talked about security services, and we've saved a bunch of money in security this budget, so that's fantastic. Increased street lighting, that's mainly in the laneways?
Yes, that's correct.
Laneways owned by us?
Yes, yeah.
All of them?
I think there's one that's not. And I think it's the one, it's the one between straight, between the C S V building and the old Guinness buildings that Dave Capel was bought, that lane is owned by him.
Okay. Okay. Are they LEDs?
They would be.
All of, all of our laneways are LEDs?
No, the ones in Vivian lanes are.
Okay, but our laneways, they, our LED retrofit program that we started a hundred years ago, are those laneways on that schedule to be changed to LEDs? Because once you change them to LEDs, if you increase maybe a little bit more lights, like you're talking brightness when you do LEDs. Yes, they are. Can we advance those? So we can increase the lighting in shared space, fifteen thousand dollars. That media, did we look at the, any in-kind opportunities, Transit? Specifically, they had mentioned Transit, but they do say Transit radio and print. So we have our print shop. Sorry, I'm looking at you, Heidi, I shouldn't be looking at your print shop. Who's got the print shop? Jason? Print shop, printing?
I mean, we, through the Chair, we could support, if there would always be...
You got to come to him, Mike, sorry.
So I suppose, yeah, we could do in-kind support, but there would always be a...
Do you know what their needs are, Jay?
A cost to the materials that are being printed, right?
Do you know what their, yes, do you know what their needs are?
I haven't had that, had that opportunity, had that conversation yet.
Okay. Graffiti and vandalism removal? Back to you, Rob, but vandalism, if somebody vandalizes a storefront, it's not us, it's the owner. Why are you limping?
Through the Chair to Counselor Plessy, graffiti, we can take care of, we actually have a program for downtown and around the city. But the insurance would have to cover, whether it's ours or the businesses, would have to cover that, the vandalism.
Yeah. Yeah, so I can't, as of right now, I can't. But I'm sure there's other. Marketing events, I'm okay with that. I see Counselor Santos on the board, finally. Thank you, Counselor Santos, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. So going back to the nudge on three-one-one, and continuing on Counselor Plessy's questions, on page ten, I see that there is a, I don't have anything on the BIA. Sorry, sorry, BIA. I see on page ten, the call volumes after hours has decreased significantly from twenty-three hundred to six hundred and eleven. Is that somewhat related to also the ability for people to use newer technology like the mobile app or online?
Through the Mayor to Counselor Santos, yes, we believe that, because everybody's being directed to online email or the app, yes.
Great. And I just did a quick calculation based on page number eleven, to maintain the service back to what it was for calls where we're getting about ten to fifteen per night now on average, twenty-three of those requests being urgent and being directed accordingly. A month, that's about twenty-four thousand dollars a month. Is that correct, or is there some variance in that? If I do two hundred and eighty-eight thousand divide by twelve?
Through the Mayor, yeah, that's, I believe that would be roughly correct, yes.
Okay. And so what I'm seeing is, is the trend in an option for people, instead of using the phone, to sit and wait to talk to an operator, who clearly there's costs associated with that, you know, the operator's there the whole night, right, waiting for the phone to ring like Batman? Right? And sometimes they'll get a call, sometimes they won't. And then when I look at the other municipalities where we compared it, Mississauga is seven a.m. to seven p.m., so they actually close earlier.
Through the Mayor, that's correct, and they're open Monday to Friday.
Okay, so that's on page fifteen. So City of Vaughan also closes earlier in terms of their call center. Region of Peel, I could understand why they would stay longer because of the human services aspect to those urgent calls. Calladen certainly closes a lot earlier, and even Vancouver closes a lot earlier in terms of the call center. Do these municipalities also, when they shut down their call center, do they also have an opportunity to go online and on a mobile app?
Through the Mayor, I would honestly have to defer to Michelle Solsky, I believe she's online right now, or Rita Shodri. I'll defer that to her, Rita or Michelle, if they're online.
That's okay. We can wait till they get, because then I have another question. So if it's an urgent request, where does it go?
If it's through the Mayor, if it's an urgent request, it would go through to security to be dispatched.
Okay. And then if it's a parking-related ticket, what happens? Like a parking ticket?
Through the Mayor, if it comes through the online or the app after midnight, it would be immediately directed to by law, and then the operating department would prioritize that and respond accordingly.
Okay, so it gets, if, so if it's not urgent, they have the option of going mobile app and online in the middle of the night, because it's, someone's parked on the road or what have you. And it'll go to by law enforcement. So my next question then is, does by law enforcement actually have staff to ticket those calls overnight when they show up?
Through the Mayor, I'll defer to Commissioner.
And this is, this is important, because this is where the connection is, right? So if three-one-one receives, let's say, the phone's operating again, right, in the middle of the night, somebody calls three-one at two o'clock in the morning, is it the three-one-one operator who then gets into their car, goes on the street, and then tickets the car?
Through the Mayor, no, it would be by law.
So then the three-one-one operator on the phone then has to transfer it to by law. So the next question is, does by law have the staff who will go and ticket that car in the middle of the night?
Through the Chair, by law does have twenty-four-seven staff. But as mentioned earlier, there is a prioritization that occurs.
Right. And how many by law staff actually work overnight, between the hours of twelve to seven in the morning? Do we know?
Through the Chair, I'm getting that information right now.
Okay, that's fine.
Sorry, a platoon is approximately twelve people, so there'll be one platoon.
So twelve people overnight for the entire city of Brampton. And my next question, maybe we could leave it for Wednesday if we don't have the answer, how many by law complaints related to parking do we get in the middle of the night? If we don't know, that's fine, yeah.
Through the Mayor, it's approximately ten to fifteen that were, I believe, let me confirm. Through, through the mayor, it's approximately ten to fifteen um, that were, I believe, let me confirm in a second. Ten to fifteen through uh, non-emergent requests are primarily related to parking, about ten to fifteen per night currently.
Okay, so here's my point, my point is, is that you could have ten, fifteen Batmans waiting for the phone to ring from twelve o'clock. Until seven in the morning, but if there isn't a system in place to actually enforce that ticket in the middle of the night, the problem is still gonna exist. And it's not three-one-one's fault because they dispatched it to the department, maybe it's not bylaw's fault because they only have twelve bylaw officers working in the middle of the night or. Perhaps there isn't a proper standard operating procedure to hold whatever bylaw officer to account as to whether or not they actually ticketed that car. But this is why the operational service review is super important. And I think that until that operational service review is taken, is, is, comes back to council. We're already seeing a declining trend and saving costs by not having the three-one-one Batmans waiting for the phone to ring in the middle of the night. Um, and so. I think that if there's any sort of adjustment to the budget or amendment to the budget to reinstate the overnight call center to wait for those. Calls. Let's take a look and see how much more these numbers reduce. How many more people end up using the more cost-effective way of online and online complaints or mobile app, let's promote that a little bit more. And. Let's see what that operational review comes back with, because I think that. If I call and complain about a parking ticket in the middle of the night to three-one-one, the person will answer the phone. The fact that they answered the phone, they've done their job. But the biggest problem is whether or not that person gets the ticket. The other problem is if I'm gonna stay up for the next five hours to find out if the bylaw officer does ticket that car, and I'm not, I'm gonna go to sleep. So in the morning when I wake up and the car is still there and the, the car has not been ticketed. Whose fault is it, is it three-one-one or is it bylaw enforcement? And I think that's the thing that we need to reconcile before we just jump ahead and think that the solution is to go back to. You know, three-hundred thousand dollars a year to, of twenty-four-seven answering the phone. Yeah.
Uh, through the mayor, just to clarify, there's about sixty online parking-related complaints that go directly through our online app to bylaw as well.
Per month or a year?
As well as the ten to fifteen calls.
So sixty, so, so people are now starting to change their behavior and actually. Go to the mobile app or go online related to parking tickets. Okay. Thank you, I don't have any further questions.
Through the chair, if I could just.
Yeah, yeah.
Add something to that, um, uh, I think this review will, will help answer a lot of these questions. There are circumstances like the example you gave. Um. The car could have been parked, not gotten a ticket because they may have actually registered their car overnight. Now, the person making the complaint would see it in the morning, they would not know.
Yeah.
Whether it's because nobody went out or somebody went out and noticed that they've already registered. So there is some complexity to these and that's why we think the review will give us a, a, a better picture.
So I think that before we jump ahead of ourselves, let's number one, see how well the online and mobile app option works. And benchmarking across all other municipalities, I think it's, you know, would be a good idea for us to continue that. And then the other piece as well is, again, it's not the three-one-one operator who's going out in the middle of the night to go ticket the car. Like there's, there's, there's a system that needs to be reconciled um, in order for us to properly deal with the residents' complaint. Thank you.
And, and through the chair, if I could just add, um, the, the numbers I have are significantly higher for the overnight complaint, so. Um, we'll, working with three-one-one, we will get you the, a better estimate, but the uh, th- there is a significant volume.
Plessy. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, and thank you, Councilor Santos. Um. I think that motion is, is very important, but I also think that the motion is important to. Bring, give us information in, in other areas of bylaw, the interaction of bylaw officers with the residents. Um, so, and, and other things that I'm trying to, trying to figure out or get more information on, and I think that's. Um, that's where I am with that motion, that's why I fully support it. As for uh, specifically trying to drive traffic to the app. Um, certainly if it hasn't been done already, it could be as easy as. Um, the first ring to three-one-one goes to a service, an answering service that says. Just that, if you go onto the app, your three-one-one app or the website. That complaint is directed directly to the enforcement officer, right? So anybody hearing that, I don't know if that's what it's doing now or not, I've called before, it doesn't do that. Kind of. But. It, um. But we, we have, uh, we have well over seven-hundred thousand essential, essentially customers. Of the corporation, um, and it's a service that we provide. And. Maybe I'm. Um, I represent a lot of, of the, uh, we have a lot of elderly that, uh, we have the highest median age. Um, that tend not to be. Uh, electronically savvy. Um, a lot of them are, a lot of them are, a lot of them are educating themselves on becoming that. Um, but a lot of them want to, um, um, they wanna talk to somebody. And I think that's still a service that we uh, should be providing. Um, I would rather see if we're not, if we're not doing a, a twenty-four hour. Um, I would like to see us pick up at. At least go till, till maybe one or two AM is what I, I would like us to do. Um, I wonder, I wonder if we broke those calls down even further, how many of those calls would be coming between those hours? And I know nobody is, nobody's looking out the window at, uh, for five hours, but. I sure can go on a camera that I have outside of my house to know if a bylaw officer came and ticketed the tow truck that I keep, no, I'm just kidding. Um, so. I. I, I think it's, I, I, how long is the operational review gonna take?
Q one.
Won't be, Q one of what?
Twenty-two.
Q one of twenty-two-four is going to be an operational review?
Through the chair, we intend to report back in Q one of twenty-two-four.
Report back with what?
With the results of our operational review.
With the results. Like I feel like we're behind already, right? I don't like talking to residents that haven't felt like they've been heard. It, they, it's to the point that when it comes to our offices, it's escalated to the point where it's. You know, it's difficult, it's a difficult conversation to have.
Through the chair, a- as, as I mentioned earlier, we've already started components of this. And so now, uh, but there's, there's more that's being requested. And we're not going to reinvent the wheel, we're gonna work with what the information we have, but consolidate it and add to that the, the kinds of information that were requested. So we're gonna try our best to do it as soon as possible, but uh, I think within Q one of twenty-two-four is realistic.
Okay. Uh, Chief Commissioner, um. Can we? Is it possible for you to tell me how many of those calls come in between the hours of twelve and one, twelve is our shutdown?
Correct.
Okay, can you, it's, is it possible you can give me that?
Through the mayor, I don't have the exact number, I can tell you that to stay open till one AM is about fifty thousand dollars more.
No, no, not dollars.
Okay.
Calls, incoming calls, I apologize.
Through the mayor, no, I don't have that exact data, but we can certainly.
Yeah.
Try to pull it.
Okay, thank you.
Try to get it to, as we're going on, just give me a couple moments.
I don't know, maybe I'm just. You know what, if I'm the only one, then. No, we've been doing it and then we stopped. Anyways, back to uh, uh, BIA, um. So let's go with the thirty-five thousand dollars in the banner, new banner arms. We're gonna take out the downtown street cleaner, the safety. Uh, the increased lighting, the graffiti and vandalism. Um, that brings you to ninety-two thousand five hundred. Um, only because we're gonna split the marketing fifty-fifty, we're gonna give you the cash value of twelve thousand five hundred. And twelve thousand five hundred in kind. So essentially you still have the forty-five thousand marking, marketing, we're just.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, um, it sounds like Council Plessy, you're moving a motion. Um. I assume that's what you're doing, we need. Preferably the motion should be in writing, um, but we need clarity on what it is that you're moving, if you're proposing to amend the budget. Um. So that could be a motion that could be voted on.
I don't know if I have to, it's, it's an ask of the BIA that's come before us, so is it currently included in the budget? And I tell you, it's not the dollar amount, it's the, it's that percentage increase, right? That's what I need to be able to. It's, it's a massive increase in percentage of a budget. And that's, and that's really the only reason, and, oh, sorry, and come on down, but um, safety. Uh, security services are where? Okay, and with the savings that you've had this year by taking some on, um, you can cover that. Perfect, and then the safety at events, not at events, that's security, but educational instructional sessions. Chief Commissioner, you can take that?
Through the mayor, we can certainly talk to them, I just don't know what instruction they're receiving.
Educational, I believe.
Through, through the mayor, then we're happy to take that on between either fire or community safety and wellbeing or depending on where it fits.
Okay.
Can we ask that, can they, are they allowed to speak, can I ask them?
Mr. President?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, they've already delegated, if there's questions of the BIA, then absolutely.
So through you, Mr. Chair, uh, regarding the, it's not the percentage increase, so that thirty-six percent that you saw was not a thirty-six percent increase. It was thirty-six percent of the revenue that they're, that were being requested, not an increase. So that's, yeah, so that slide that we saw, the first slide had thirty-two percent, I think, coming from our levies.
Mm-hmm.
Thirty-four percent coming from our levies, that thirty-six percent was the, a third of what we were asking the city for for revenue. And the remaining was coming from the, um, the, the grants and the sponsorships and the reserve. So it was a third of the revenues were coming from the city and the, the other two-thirds were coming from the levies of the grant and the reserves.
But the two-fifty-seven, two-fifty is an additional ask.
Well, 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 is, well.
The way, kind of, can we bring that, those slides back up?
Mr. Mayor, yes, I was trying to get back to the BIA presentation to.
Okay.
Help uh, illustrate what is being explained, but I'll go back.
Can, please continue to walk me through it, yes.
No problem. Um, when it came to security, so the BIA has met, so they do have a beauty and security committee and they met with bylaw. And one of the issues that they were having with security, particularly in the downtown, is bylaw was able, was unable to do any enforcement on private property. And because of the lack of enforcement on private property, the BIA wanted to be, wanted for some instances that did not require a nine-one-one call to the police. To have some security personnel in there to help with these security needs, so that's where that, that security item came in. In addition to their happen exploring and uh, an app. That they would be able, the business owners would be able to use, that offered cameras in certain areas to help with the security. Um, that company that the BIA just did talk to you, they're currently doing some test runs or trials in three other BIAs in Toronto. They weren't firm on that, but they saw the app being very useful for the businesses. Right now, what the business owners in the downtown area have been doing is using a WhatsApp chat group to say, I had an incident at the business, be aware, this just happened. And it really is not necessarily secure, nor is it because of the organic nature. So the thought was to look at a service, a private service, that would be able to do uh, some of that work. Uh, part of that budget as well, I'll give you an example of an incident that happened when we had party in the lanes over the summer. There was a security issue where they had hired private, they had private security, uh, but they were only able to have two, um, private security officers at that time. And there was an incident that city security was unable to help with, so they recognize for larger events that they are having, they are, there is gonna be a need to hire. Additional security personnel in order to make sure that the security is secure for the events that they were hosting.
Why wouldn't our security be able to help in an event, in an issue that was happening in the downtown?
They said they were, that they were unable to help.
Doesn't seem right. I'm not, I'm looking for anybody that can explain security to me at the city.
Through the chair to Council Plessy, um, talking with our, with Raj, we, we can probably work with the BIA for any of the special events so that we can. Um, double or whatever we need to do to increase the amount of security to help out with that specific event. It wouldn't be on a regular basis, but it would be for the events, we can work, we can work on that.
Probably, and it's pri, like there's private property, yes, but. When it's an event, it's a, we're, it's a, all, we're all in this together event, right?
Yep.
Okay.
So Mr. Tarkis, the second, um, second s- slide after that, or maybe the one before, sorry? Maybe slide number eight? Right, yeah.
So that general subsidy, the new, where is that coming from? The levy?
No, so the thirty-four percent is the levy, so we have a full, um, itemized budget that was presented to the mayor when the chair did meet. That had a long itemized budget, what's new is the, the breakdown that we had in the previous slide. That had the security, the enhancements for cleaning, the marketing, that is what it added up to the two-fifty-seven. For the general subsidies that we were discussing just now. But in terms of the overall ask, what I was saying to you is in a thirty-four percent increase, but the ask from the city represents thirty-six percent. Of the total revenues needed to operate the BIA's budget for twenty-twenty-four.
Okay. Um. Uh, the staffing subsidy rent relief, any of those, the city's continued financial support, are any of those currently in kind?
Yes. Yes. So the, well, well, no, so what had happened with the rent relief is that the rent relief was given because the BIA was previously in a city-owned space. And they were asked to leave because the space was no longer viable. And the rent relief was given to augment because when they were in the city's own space, they were in the city, so that wasn't in kind.
Mm-hmm.
That wasn't in kind, um. An in kind, had an in kind value, however, now they are in a private space to which they're paying rent.
What are we doing with that city-owned space now? You can tell me, I know you can tell me. Why?
The city-owned space that we were originally at.
Yeah, what's in there now? It's vacant.
Yes. So that's in the heritage block.
Yeah. What are we doing with it? Nothing. Is it? Inhabitable? Is it inhabitable? Is it full of mold? Is the roof caving in? The old BIA space.
Through the chair to Council Plessy, can you, can you please repeat the question?
Yeah, where the BIA used to be in the heritage block?
Yes.
What's wrong with that space?
So we have a lot of mold, asbestos. And uh, those properties, they're old actually, so we have designated substances in them.
I always say, can we find space in the West Tower? Okay, thank you. So the in-kind event support is twenty-five thousand. And then the specialty. And then the specialty events for forty-five thousand is separate from that twenty thousand of in-kind. What would the twenty thousand of in-kind event support be, like, stage?
So for instance, uh, the BIAs have, through working with tourism, they are able to have tent spaces at the farmer's market.
Tent spaces?
Tent spaces, ten individual booths.
Oh, ten, okay, sorry.
That they can rotate among members, so that's a part of the in-kind support. If any city merchandise, for instance tents, that the BA may need, the BIA gets the fr, the tents free of cost, however, for the soft cost. However, the labor for the installation, the BIA still pays for, so that twenty thousand really incorporates farmer's market, tenting for events. Um, the mail-out that we do, the, the, the mail-out that we do to residents in the area for events happening in the summer in particular. Those are all things that are covered in that twenty thousand dollars support that we work a lot with communications for.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah.
Um, and then the forty-five thousand in marketing and events, specialty events?
So one of the things that the BIA think has, has struggled with for some time is really doing, um, enhancing some of the events that they're doing, is some marquee events. And with the construction coming on, on this year, for instance, we ha, they have the ability to do a pedestrian street fair for three days where we were able to have people into the season, like, have an open air market in a way, and have pedestrians come through, which is what we did for the pedestrian summer. They want to continue with that, uh, there are also some other opportunities, um, with MetroLinks to be able to do some events as well in the summer. That's geared towards one of the anchor things that the city of Brampton does well, that's culinary tourism. And working with MetroLinks in different areas of the city of Brampton to be able to do some of those events. And that would come into the specialty events that they are thinking of, more pedestrian summer types of activities, and that, that culinary, that culinary pedestrian-focused types of events. Because really, when people think about the city of Brampton, they think of it as, uh, United Nations of restaurants and eatery and culinary. And I think it's one of the strong points of our downtown district, but really across the city. So we have identified three events that we'd like to work on, um, from a culinary nature that will see more people coming in, not just to the downtown core, but across the city. From a culinary nature, but starting in the downtown area, and that's what that, that, those are what that, that particularly, that is what the forty-five thousand dollars is looking at. Really exploring some of our opportunities that we really haven't been able to explore before from a culinary and pedestrian nature.
With MetroLinks?
With MetroLinks.
What would their, why, why MetroLinks?
Why MetroLinks, because they've been very successful in other BIA areas of supporting those types of festivals, and they've had great success. And it's just a really great fit, particularly since we just renamed our Brampton Go as Brampton Innovation Go. We saw that there were really some great advantages to look at different MetroLink stations across the city and do some activations based on the success that they've had with other BIAs in the culinary aspect.
And do, what do they provide?
Well, we, I'm not too sure that I can say that just yet, because we're still.
Okay, that's, um, any of these events, um, do you charge the vendors?
Well, if they're BIA members, they're not charged.
Okay.
If they are coming in from other jurisdictions, they are charged.
And what's that kind of, is there a percentage or ratio to BIA members to non-BIA members?
Yeah, typical is about, uh, sixty percent BIA members and forty percent non.
Okay, and then the forty percent that's not, um, where do those dollars go?
Uh, goes back into the events, so marketing promotions, getting tents for them, or renting tables and whatnot.
Okay, and is that typical for every event, the sixty, forty?
Um, typically, yes, yeah, that's what we've seen this past, uh, past summer.
Okay, I'm gonna maintain with the, um, uh, providing the thirty-five thousand. The forty-five thousand, fifty-fifty, though, I know, put this in the form of, uh, Marlin.
Through you, uh, Mayor to Councilor Plessy, staff would like to offer some comments on the first item on the list.
Thirty-five thousand?
Yeah.
Banners?
Yes.
Okay, please do.
Thanks, Counselor, and, uh, through the chair, just on that, this has come up in previous requests, I haven't, staff haven't necessarily been consulted on that item. And I would say that with the current banners, if we update with a second arm, the existing banners, there will be a loss on cost. So for example, Remembrance Day banners, our team, comms and marketing produces, but it's not really, not really an owner of the arms itself. But Remembrance Day, for example, costs around thirty thousand dollars, so if we upgrade for thirty-five the arms, we're throwing existing banners in the garbage, so there's a loss. That's not necessarily captured with these numbers. I would also say, um, our team's working with downtown revitalization and planning building growth management to look at, um, the light posts that these are on, and if those are getting replaced, how do we upgrade this when that occurs? And so that, those conversations aren't going, so I just suggest maybe considering that.
Yep, so you'll work with the BIA then for the, for any banners and new banner arms, and come back to council with whatever their requirements are? Um, and what we're able to provide? With everything that's going on right now, if there's gonna be a light post that's falling down, or if the arms need to be replaced, there are lights, right?
There are light posts, I would just suggest that i- in terms of the existing banners, there's a, a lost cost not reflected in the budget proposal because the existing banners that the city currently uses with the one banner arm won't fit with the two banner arm option. So there's just, uh, additional numbers that need to be, I would suggest, considered in, in approving that.
Um, okay, so we're changing all the streetlights from a one banner system to a two banner system.
That's the, that's the proposal here.
Two arms, one arm at the top that's holding the banner, one arm at the bottom that's holding the banner, correct?
Correct.
It's currently one arm at the top?
Yes.
Okay. Um, the banners that, so the banners that, Remembrance Day.
Remembrance Day, we, we've done citizen awards in the past, there's a, a couple throughout the year, I don't have a exact full list with me right now, but I know Remembrance Day, for example, was alone, was roughly for the citywide was thirty thousand dollars, approximately, so w- we can change it all, but then I have to go an additional thirty to replace Remembrance Day, plus whatever else we'd normally put up within the year span.
So do we know what that thirty-five thousand, um, from the BIAs being requested, is it multiple banners, is it?
This is for the banner arms, I believe, and it says banners, I haven't been, uh, uh, our, our team hasn't been consulted on what banners the BIA would look to put up.
Okay.
Sir, Councilor Plessy, um, for the banners, it's the printing of the banners, and we had an estimate of fifteen thousand dollars for the arms themselves. So twenty thousand dollars for the printing, the recommendation to having the second arm, and there is actually a functionality issue that we discussed earlier today, so I don't really wanna overcomplicate this. But the reason why it was twenty thousand dollars in printing of the banners is because, because we don't have a second arm to secure it, they tear easily.
Sure.
So because they tear easily, and they are quite seasonal, they're replacing the banners, the lifespan is shorter than it ordinarily would have been. You could have two arms supporting it. The conversation that we had today about the second arm as well is that it may not be functional because when we are doing, um, when we are doing the horticulture care of our plants, the trucks will then hit possibly the second arm if we had a second arm installed. So maybe even with the installation of the second arm in terms of functionality for our horticultural team, it, it becomes a problem to actually access it because the second arm now is lower, because it's the bottom arm, and it may prove to be difficult.
And our water truck might hit it.
Correct.
So I don't know what to do with this, because we don't know if there's another, if we're installing a second arm that might be hit or may not, but we're not go, I'm not putting thirty-five thousand, you're, we're doing the second arm, right? It's us. You're not doing it.
Well, we, we would.
Second arm that might be hit by a water truck. Are we installing the second arm?
Uh, my suggestion at this time would be for, we're working with revitalization right now to see what that's gonna look like through the current construction project. We need to look at options, the second arm might not be the solution.
Okay, I'm referring the thirty-five thousand back to all of you guys to come up with something, please, you have a third arm for all. Um, so let's go, let's go with the, and I'll bring this forward, Peter, at, uh, council next week. Okay, forty-five thousand dollars for the specialty events, forty-five thousand dollars for marketing, fifteen, uh, fifty-fifty, half will be in-kind, half will be cash value. Everything else, we're taking care of, except for the thirty-five thousand, that you guys are gonna come up with an amazing solution. And come back to council at a later date. Sounds good? Thank you. Everybody okay with that? Thumbs up? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I think, I think the best thing would be just to work on a motion, um, prior to Wednesday, that could sort of specify all this. And meet with the BIA to make sure we're aligned on that solution. Yes. Okay, um, are there any other speakers? Councilor Plessy?
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, um, for breakdown of the council office budget. Uh, it's a, it's just the one pager, right? Council office budget. Uh, so sixty-eight thousand dollar increase for compensation adjustments to reflect actual costs and forecasted actuals. Total mayor members of council department budget breakdown is provided on forty-nine, oh, this is a new, did you guys give us a new? Yes, you did. The exact same as what this is, there's no breakdown.
Sorry, counsel, through the chair. Through the chair, Counselor, page forty-nine or, uh, operating twelve. In the operating overview section, page twelve there.
Yep.
There is a table.
Yep.
And the first column, uh, on top shows the overall budget, and then the breakdown in the, in the rest of the column by cost category.
So four point six million salary wages benefits contribution to reserves and capitals.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. Two hundred and thirty-seven thousand office and admin, sixty thousand professional services. What is that? Advertising, marketing, promotion, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, staff development, two thousand? Okay, uh, advertising, marketing, promotion, can I get a breakdown of the six, of the six hundred and fifty thousand?
Well, through the chair, I'm sorry, I don't have the breakdown, and, uh, as I said, uh, these are, uh, total budgets. We don't like, uh, we don't budget for council by, by specific items.
So this is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for advertising, marketing, and promotion, based off of what, twenty-twenty-two?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, can I see twenty-twenty-two's breakdown of?
Yes, it's published on, uh, online, so every year, as you know, we, we publish the exact spending.
Okay.
Uh, against each of the counselors and against the mayor, uh, cost center, and that shows exactly how it was spent.
Okay, um, and what's the sixty thousand for professional services?
So, Counselor, uh, as you, I believe you know, uh, you can also reallocate within your cost center how you're using those different budgets. So once they were originally set, based on, on some previous spending, uh, that's how they're allocated. And then it's up to do each of the counselors how they would like to exactly use some of those amounts.
Yeah, so I, and I realize that, but in, within a counselor's office, you have a certain budget that you and are only allowed to spend it within whatever the rules are, um, that you can spend. I can't go and purchase, uh, a, a five thousand dollar watch and, and gift it to a resident because they did a good job. I'm not allowed to do that. Am I allowed to do that?
No.
So, Counselor.
So, so I have ru, I have rules on what I, we used to have rules on what we could spend our budget on. Um, do we still have rules on what?
Absolutely, there is, uh, there is a, a guideline of exactly how the, what expenses are allowed and what expenses are not allowed. Uh, Mayor, do you mind, please, just maybe come and, uh, give us a little more details on that?
You could tell me what the rules are about being.
It's a very lengthy, to share to Councilor Plessy, so spending, uh, by members of council is, uh, guided by administrative director, mayor, and councilor expenses, uh, policy. Uh, so there's different categories that are outlined in the, in the policy, uh, ranging from community involvement, uh, office supplies, travel, staff development. So each expense category has very specific rules on what, uh, can, what, uh, can the budget be used for.
Okay.
And if I can just add, uh, at the beginning of each term, uh, we work closely with, uh, your, uh, office staff to provide training and, uh, guidelines on, on this administrative directive.
Sorry, through the chair, just, what I was referring to is that in terms of budget allocation, uh, each counselor has the ability to use or reallocate some of the budgets to different budget categories if they need to. But of course, the, the expenses, they have to be what has been set as, uh, as guideline.
So if I can just add, Nash, the only fixed, uh, expense within the, uh, elected official's budget is actually elected official's salary. The remainder of the budget is at discretion of each elected official, how they gonna use it, either for staffing or community involvement and whatnot.
Right, within, within reason, I can't pay one staff member the entire amount of the budget. I have to stay within the, 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 yeah, corporate guidelines and where that level, yes.
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, you have mayor and members of council, can we separate, how much is the mayor and how much is the members of council?
Through the chair, counsel, that's currently not included in the budget book, uh, but, uh, we have the details that we can provide them.
Okay, please provide those, you don't know what they, what they are now?
Um, I don't know the exact numbers, sorry.
Okay. Sorry, Nash?
No, sorry, through, through the chair, I just wanted to, um, let counsel know that there has been no changes to the other expenditure. So the two thirty-seven, the sixty, the two, it's exactly the same from twenty-twenty-three, nothing was changed.
Okay, except it's been increased.
The only thing that, no, no increases, the only thing that this budget is doing is increasing the salary line to keep up with economic adjustment. So all those expenditure lines are exactly the same from last year.
Okay, um, and then, sorry, hold on one second. Um, in previous budgets, we didn't, we didn't take, council said no to the raise, even though whatever the, uh, COLA was, we, we said no. Is, has that started back again? And did you go all the way back to when council said no, or you just started as if it's year one?
So what we've been doing is putting in a provision, so this is a provision, um, that in April, I believe, when HR actually rolls out the whole pay increase, a decision can be made then, it can be made now, to make it zero, and we'll zero this out.
Okay.
So we've put this in as a placeholder.
Okay.
Um, and when council makes that decision, they can make it now, they can make it later, we'll adjust accordingly.
Okay. And you don't have the separation between mayor and council office, okay, can we get that? Those were my questions, thank you, Counselor Santos, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, Counselor Santos.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, just a, a very quick, um, follow-up comment on, on this one. Um, and I'm happy to talk to staff as well offline, Nash or, um, Mar.
And I'm happy to talk to staff as well, offline, Nash or Mark. I think we need to find a better way of forecasting actuals to budget for council budgets. I've found this year in particular, and previous years, very challenging to figure out exactly what was spent, what was not spent, what's being forecasted. Like, I don't know what spreadsheets are, what the formula is, but it's always been a challenge. And if we're given a budget, just like staff are given a budget, we want to make sure it meets actuals as close as possible, so that we can serve the residents appropriately based on the budget that we are given. And in some instances, you know, folks on my team have seen a variance or surplus in one month that was significant, and then a few weeks later, it's completely different. And, and we can't, like, it's difficult to manage our limited resources in the same way that you're expected to do if we don't get like a clear picture of what is happening and how, how folks are actually managing the budget in the background. So there's, there needs to be better reconciliation, or I need to better understand how, what you guys are doing when you provide the forecast, because it's been very confusing. Yeah.
Absolutely, we're, we're happy, through the chair, Counselor, we're happy to work with you and the rest of the counselors to, to review this and any improvements in how we can forecast through the year and report on that, we'll be happy to do so.
Perfect. Thanks so much. Thanks, Nash.
Thank you.
Counselor Keenan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How do you want me to do this? Counselor Plushy is nice enough here to negotiate with me and take the pickleball from, I'm not taking it from Cassie Campbell, and relocating it to Peel Village. There's a lot of residents in Peel Village that really have been asking for this.
I love pickleball. Is there?
There is, it's pretty straightforward, you need a motion for that in writing, or can we knock that one off now?
If there's no budget impact, through you, Mr. Mayor, presuming it's just moving pickleball court from position A to position B, then there isn't anything that's required, but I'll let staff weigh in on that.
Through the mayor, I can confirm by Wednesday, I don't believe so, but if I can follow up, we will make the changes.
Okay, so I don't see any other questions. We have placeholder times on Friday, Monday, and Tuesday, and of course, the main budget session on Wednesday. So I'm going to suggest we reconvene Wednesday, unless council has some additional questions, then we can easily convene one of the additional meeting slots. But otherwise, we'll reconvene on Wednesday. And Peter, procedurally, I believe you do have to ask if there's public questions?
We, we could, yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, since we're here.
Are there any public questions? Okay.
Hello, my name is Sylvie, person of work for, this is not about transit this time, I swear. So in the Financial Master Plan, it recommended that the city has a ten-year capital forecast, is there a plan to be one for the two thousand and twenty-four budget or in future ones? Because I think, I previously asked earlier this year, and I was told it would come during budget time, and I did not see it when I perused the budget for the ten-year capital forecast, which is industry standard among municipalities.
Yes, we have a three-year tax as well, as part of the portfolio to see the practice we're using for several years. We provide the ten-year capital forecast in the long-term financial plan, which we already did as part of that, and we provide it in, in future updates of that, that's the practice we've been using. It's considered their best practice, as you know, from, from the awards that we get for that.
Okay. No discussion, so different question. Previously, someone in council had said, here in the budget meetings overall, about how we'd gone from one of the highest tax rates to the lowest tax rates, but the thing being used to show it's the lowest tax rate, which I agree, is on a per capita amount. And I had actually delegated in two thousand and twenty that this is a more fair way to put it, it shows we're the second lowest compared to Milton. And when I went back to the BMA reports from where it said we were the highest, it also showed us the second lowest compared to Milton, so there has not meaningfully been a change in this, and so I'm a little confused on that. So that was something that was repeatedly mentioned in the city's budget information and mentioned by council and staff.
Through the chair? We on, I can answer this as well, on different metrics, whether it's on per capita or based on average, different types of dwellings and so on, on many, on all of them, we actually show among the lowest property tax rates on that. So it's a consistent message, whether we're measuring it one way or another, it still is showing that.
That wasn't what council had said. That was what confused me, and the lack of clarity. It had been sent, it had been the highest, and that was in the communication, and that's, there's a lack of clarity there. Sorry.
So, thank you, Sylvie, we can provide you those charts that have been shared in each budget year, showing Brampton's progress. We put it up at the first day of every, of every budget presentation, and yet the, the charts were not as kind to the city previously as they are now. So we're now in recess until, until Wednesday at one.